Okay, uh, good to see everybody. Does anyone know which meeting this is?
Uh, six.
Six?
Six, alright, uh, welcome, everybody. I have something I need to immediately, uh, bring up. So, some of you may, oh, actually, you may not have noticed because I edited the old, uh, police continuity plan document. Uh, it's at the bottom there. It's report number two, six, three, five. Uh, can everyone pull that up, please?
Obsidian.
Let's go ahead and read that real quick. Uh, I don't see any need to read out loud just because, yeah, I know.
What's the report number? I'm having trouble pulling up the continuity plan.
Uh, two, six, three, five.
Can you shut the fuck up?
That's my judge.
Not mentally prepared for this dog.
Yeah, for, uh, for full disclosure, um, yeah, I did, uh, maxed it spitball some of these, uh, things with me, um. And yeah, I'm, uh, I'm kind of in a, a agreement with, uh, what, what's stated here, you know, a rose by any other name is, is still rose, um.
Uh, I, I will, I will speak, I will speak on briefly why, uh, we're pivoting from commissioner to chief of police. And that's because in the future, um, I spoke with the state about this, that they have a vision for commissioner. That is, uh, something that will be instated in the future, um, and there's definitely a place for a commissioner. But right now it's best not to muddy the waters and to kind of, i- i- and look, I was interviewing cops for the purpose, uh, to basically fulfill a role that, um, uh, my vision was commissioner would be head of the PD, right? Uh, the state's vision of commissioner was that the, uh, the commissioner would be a sort of, uh, non-cop, like a political cop almost, like someone who would be a go-between for the mayor's office and, uh, PD, uh, to kind of do things that aren't possible yet. Um, the, the purpose of the auditing team, uh, and the purpose of my, uh, questioning of various officers has to, been to essentially figure out, uh, and pass along names to the, the state proper that are qualified to do the job of a chief of police. Uh, it's like Maltin said, rose by any, you know, any other name. Uh, I'm just editing this document or proposing that this document be edited for the purpose of, uh, posterity. So that, that moving forward, the person who's ultimately chosen for that position is, uh, what they should be called, not something that might come up in the future that might conflict with that. That's all. It's, it's a bit, a bit complicated. Uh, TLDR, uh, state has a vision for commissioner. Uh, that vision is not what we have been trying to establish. Uh, commissioner will come later. Chief of police needs to come now. Boom.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just piggyback a little bit on what Max was saying, um, in previous some of the conversation. Uh, commissioner in the future will be more of a political role, something where a cop may ascend to a commissioner. Uh, but that cop will no longer be dealing with, let's say, day-to-day affairs, things like that. It'll be more of an oversight, uh, go-between as Max was saying, so, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of amending the legislation.
Are there, does anyone have any, uh, concerns about this questions? Uh, Dakota?
Uh, what, Malden, are you speaking already?
Yeah, so, uh, just sort of like a very initial concern is, uh, because this is technically a chief of police and, uh, there is that, that sunset clause, Max, like what, that does the chief and, uh, in theory, whoever they pick as their ass chief, what, what happens if this legislation is not extended, renewed, et cetera?
I can speak on that judicially.
Sure.
So legally, the sunset clause applies to the power of the mayor on behalf of the state to aid in investigating and appointing a commissioner slash chief, whatever we label it as. The ability of the state to do so is always and will always be without question. Uh, the sunset clause is just simply the portions that enable the mayor to be a part of the process.
Right. What, what I just want to, uh, I guess clarify and make sure is, uh, you know, uh, day, day after Max leaves office, that, that chief and assistant chief is still gonna be there?
Correct. The state is choosing them, not Max. Um, the state is making the action. Max is the conduit as we discussed.
Yep, that's the, that was the only question I had. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, we, uh, I, I foresee this document kind of being edited in the future, uh, actually maybe even just removed. Um, uh, it should be written somewhere eventually that the chief of police, uh, is a position that the state reserves, uh, the ability to essentially change whenever they feel that that particular chief is being ineffective. I wrote that at the bottom there. Uh, the state reserves the right to replace, uh, replace any ineffective chief of police. Any chief of police has the ability to choose their own assistant. Boom. That, that's kind of stuff that, uh, moving forward will be the norm, uh, as dictated to me, and we will, uh, write it somewhere eventually, I guess.
Is there any objection on the floor to me editing the legislation to simply change the nomenclature from commissioner and chief of police and/or add chief of police to the line? Because we want to reserve the power of the state, uh, via Max to potentially, uh, install a commissioner, uh, using investigative data he's gathered. They're just choosing not to do so this moment. So does anyone have a problem with us adding chief of police?
Dakota looks like is attempting to raise his hand.
Yeah, no, I, uh, oh. Uh, all I was gonna say is, uh, I have no problem with that amendment as long as, uh, I have several questions that I've gathered from the PD over ambiguity in the legislation, and I would just, uh, seek clarity on those questions here, uh, and I don't know if that will result in any more amendments, but I do need to ask some of these.
We should wait for the mayor to get back then.
Yes, absolutely.
So you were saying that, uh, sorry for my voice, I got shot in the neck, um, you're essentially saying that this would be amended to say chief of police currently, but it still gives the
So essentially, yeah.
to appoint a commissioner, so it could
The mayor, the mayor is given the power via the state to gather names and provide them to the state on behalf of the OSPD. The state then decides who is installed as commissioner, chief of police, et cetera. All we're doing is reevaluating which position is being installed currently. As discussed, the state feels that the commissioner role is needed, but is needed in the future, and right now it is needed more than a chief of police based on the feedback given by the auditors such as Mr. Svenson and Mr. Glory over there, uh, is a chief of police in lieu of the commissioner role.
Okay.
But, uh, yes, the commissioner role will still be reserved. Um, uh, to be honest with you, the only thing this legislation does, uh, in terms of selecting those roles is allowing Max to be the conduit for the decision-making. Uh, the state would still be selecting these folks either way, just as I am selected and serve at their pleasure.
Uh, while, while we're waiting, I guess, just to, uh, for better, like, time allocation, uh, we don't have to discuss it right now, but I, I will be, uh, proposing two things today. If you all want to, uh, pre-read, uh, you know, so you kind of have like, uh, a little bit of knowledge when we do get to me. Uh, it's gonna be over, uh, reports two, eight, zero, five and two, eight, two, nine. It's just legal definitions for privilege and then, uh, something I've been spitballing on, uh, government worker notebooks that, uh, I'd like to talk about.
Welcome back, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to catch you up, Max, um, as you were being raptured, um.
He might have to walk out and come back in.
H- hello?
Hello? I, I, I need someone to pull me out.
No, you don't. Just think about stopping what you're doing, Max.
It's not working. It's not working. Uh, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Uh, I, I'm gonna go downstairs real quick to sign back in. I need to be let out though.
Alright.
Anyone want to let me out? Question mark?
I don't like my case currently.
The door is open.
Hi, Max.
Not for me.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
They just have to pull him through the door.
Thank you, thank you, darling.
Alright.
Uh.
Max, did you want me to record or no?
Yes, go, go, hold on, wait for me, though, up here.
Alright.
Hmm. I just quit while we're waiting.
Hmm.
Think we should raise hunting licenses.
How much?
Couple thousand.
Okay, is it, is it more popular now?
Uh, it's paying out a lot more and yeah, it's a lot more popular now.
Okay, maybe like twenty-five hundred.
Uh, yeah, I mean, from what I'm hearing, one deer is nine fifty.
One deer and how many can you catch like an hour, do you know?
Uh. Don't know, I, but there's like an influx of people doing this, so.
Okay, I will, uh, I'll bring it up. Thank you.
I, you probably even do like five if you really wanna get crazy.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll bring it up. I'm thinking about a number.
Yeah, because. Uh, yeah, I don't know. It's, it sounded a little crazy out there right now.
Okay.
Hmm.
The hell is going on?
It's Jamal with a boombox, I think.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I was gonna say those gunshots sound really bassy.
Mm-hmm.
Bringing a lot of powder crack there.
That sounds like cannonballs almost.
Yeah, I got you.
You'll be hearing the shots go now?
Uh, nope.
I hear nothing.
Sure?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Alright, bye. Sorry, sorry.
Okay, uh, so, as you were, uh, on your way out getting raptured, Mr. Mayor, uh, Dakota mentioned that he had a couple of questions to bring up regarding the legislation, more clarifications?
Sure.
For the PD?
Yeah, there is, uh, we had a meeting in the middle of the week where a lot of things were discussed. There seems like there's a lot of ambiguity on the part of officers as far as, uh, what?
Uh, Jamal, shut up with your damn musket soundbite.
I'll just start asking some of the, these are basically generic questions that were brought up and, uh, I know as, uh, yourself and, uh,
Cantor got shot a couple days ago.
The chief justice were, uh, the architects of this.
He's being targeted.
Unless I'm misquoting anybody.
Nope.
So Siobhan's being targeted?
Uh, so as far as hiring and firing within the PD, does the mayor's office, uh, hold the ability to outright fire and hire people from the PD?
Uh, as written technically, yeah.
Once again, I will direct you to understand the language that is mentioned no less than like ten times in that document that says as an agent of the state.
Whoa, that's a feature I didn't know about. What the hell?
If you think that Max is going to be able to just haul off and do anything he wants and not have the state intervene, uh, well, you're wrong.
Okay, that's fun. Uh, I would just like, you know, a couple more questions then.
Please.
Uh, does the mayor's office, uh, hold the right to have access to PD documents upon immediate request?
Um, I would say... Yes, for now, yeah.
Depends on the document for me. Legally, he has access to documents that pertain to his purview, but there may be things that don't pertain to his purview that, you know, would require a subpoena or any other kind of inquisitive action to retain.
Okay. Uh, where are we? Uh, can the mayor's office, uh, reserve the right to overturn decisions made by the PD command?
Um, yeah, sure.
Is that just state intervention again, uh, chief justice?
I, I mean, Dakota, uh, I'm gonna be frank with you.
Yep.
This is really redundant and, um, I don't know, silly, maybe is the wrong word, but, look, if, if the concern is, is the mayor going to do things that the PD doesn't like, or the PD disagrees with, or he's going to override the PD, the real question you should be asking yourself is, is the state going to do that? And the answer is yes. If the state feels that the PD isn't accomplishing their goals, or the PD makes an incorrect decision or whatever, then the state will step in. And again, I'm gonna reflect you to a parallel with the DOJ. Uh, there was this thing called the Senate installed where, uh, appeals had to go above judges because the state sometimes disagreed with how the judges handled themselves. Now, I, as an agent of the state, the appointed chief justice, sit in a very similar role as the role being described with the mayor with the PD. I oversee the DOJ on behalf of the state. I can fire judges at will. I can countermand the decisions in an appeal. But I'm doing so at the behest and with the blessing of the state. I serve at their pleasure. Nitpicking what the mayor can do is foolish because the mayor is the state in this action. That's what the legislation establishes is a chain of command effectively, where it's the state, the mayor as their agent conduit and mouthpiece, and then the PD. So, so yes, the mayor is the state. The mayor can do what the state wants and he will do so on their behalf. And if he does something wrong or he overreaches, then the state will cull him like a batch of maligned wheat.
Nice vocab, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, you know, I just want a clarity on those questions and, uh, I got it, so thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I didn't hear any nays insofar as the, uh, revision is concerned, correct? Good, revision passes. Excellent, very good. Um, relatedly, on the same topic, I have conferred with the state and submitted my findings coupled with that which I discovered in, uh, heard from not only the captains or a captain of the OSPD. Uh, I spoke with nearly every single senior officer, spoke with Maltin briefly, um, and I submitted all of the intel I had to the state. State has returned their verdict to me. Uh, and I will be announcing the new chief of police at the shift three meeting, so let's try to get through this as fast as possible, huh?
Should we, uh, guys suggest we get through the DOC bit first?
Yeah, okay.
Just so we can clear out the room a little bit?
Uh, okay, so, let's do something else first and let me very quickly draft it up. I can, I can knock that shit out real quick.
I'm, I'm editing it right now.
Oh shit, alright, fuck it. Alright, um, many of you guys present, sorry, my chair's a little squeaky. Um, and everyone here has heard our ambitious and future-looking plan for the Department of Corrections. Department of Corrections, fucking lame as shit. Uh, it was only ever used as a, uh, stepping stone to eventually join the police department. Uh, it's full of, of a bunch of, uh, no one wants to sit in Bowling Brook. I'm gonna be fucking honest. However, despite everything and against all odds, we have located two brave individuals who are, who are more than capable to handle the monotony, the, and the doldrums and the, the other assorted, uh, undesirables of society. Uh, before you stand, uh, the future dual wardens of Bowling Brook Penitentiary, Bobby Charles and Carmine Costello. Gentlemen?
Aye, aye, folks.
Here's folks.
I've been informed by the sitting mayor that, uh, the prison has been thrown to the wayside. And my mother taught me, one man's trash is another man's treasure. So I gladly accept this position if it is handed to me. And there are two things I will promise you that I'll bring to this city, okay? Two principles. That is God and rehabilitation. For too long has this city gone on with criminality and criminal activities. And with me at the head of Bowling Brook Penitentiary along with my best friend Bobby, I promise you, the disease will be cured, for we are the cure.
Oh my god.
For example, look to my right, Mr. K, a bona fide, verified former crook, soon to be exonerated. If I can fix him and turn him into a good, what can I do? You've chosen the right man for the job, and I appreciate you for that. Bowling Brook?
Uh, okay, didn't know we were, didn't know we had a, a chance.
Bowling Brook?
Bowling Brook?
DOC?
I have a dem- demonstration ready if you don't mind.
Please.
Of how we, we, Donkey, bring the duck in.
Bring him in.
Oh wait, is that the guy in the orange vest outside?
Yes, yes, yes.
Hey, hey, inmate four, three, six.
Cor- uh, Cor, go ahead and unlock the door.
I don't have keys, actually.
Oh, well, let me do it. Donkey!
You're in for a show, folks.
Hey, chow time inmate.
Let's go prisoner for twenty-sixty-nine. Bring the cameras in too. Bring them on in.
Uh, prisoner?
Inmate, 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 oh, seven hundred inmate.
Oh, seven hundred, oh, seven.
Prisoner for twenty-six-nine, step forward, chow time's over.
Make sure, make sure you're
What the hell did you just say to me inmate?
Make sure you're yelling, Gus. Oh my!
What the hell?
Hey, inmate four, three, six.
You are fucking pigs. I hate all of you.
Inmate four, three, six.
Rehabilitation folks. Oh my, my spine. Y'all time's over. My spine. No time for you, son.
Okay, I can look at his feet. I can't do anything about this.
This city, hallelujah.
Hey, put him in solitary, put him in solitary.
You're going in the hole, four, twenty-sixty-nine.
Alright.
Scene.
The system works.
Quick and swift. That's what we can promise you.
That was fucking sick. Let's go. Oh shit.
Uh, I'm gonna lock the door.
Yeah, he's in the hole. He's locked in the hole.
Alright.
Remember the last one that got locked in the hole? We, we ain't seen him since twenty nineteen.
The plan is simple, okay? Um, the police department doesn't wanna deal with Bowling Brook. I don't wanna deal with Bowling Brook. Chief Justice doesn't wanna deal with Bowling Brook. Willing to bet that most council members don't wanna deal with Bowling Brook. People don't even wanna be in Bowling Brook. Uh, except for these two gentlemen. So I propose, uh, and then, and I believe the chief justice has probably drafted something up already. Let me take a quick little peek.
I'm not, but I'll write something simply.
Chief Justice?
Yeah.
I'd like to, uh, chip in when you write up that draft, since it will be us that handle it.
Oh, let me be very clear with you Carmine. Uh, given that this was, uh, partly born from my, uh, idea chamber, uh, here's my, you know, caveat to all of it. Uh, I'm gonna, you know, hire you and Mr., uh, Charles over there to work for DOC, so you guys got keys and all that. Uh, but past that, you ain't getting shit. You're not getting guns, you're not getting tasers, you're not getting armory, uh, you're gonna be the lord of the flies.
You ever read that, Carmine?
Yeah, yes, I have. And I know I'll be the first to eat the weakest.
That's what I'm saying, Carmine. That's what I'm saying. But yeah, we, uh, it will be very, it'll be very simple. Simply, the legislation will follow that you and Bobby Charles are empowered to run the DOC how you see fit. Uh, and we are empowered to shakehand you whenever we see fit, so, you know, have fun.
Oh, there's only one, only one
Oh yeah, there is one more caveat.
It, it, as wardens or whoever you're working with, you, if someone's time is up and they say, "I want to leave, my time is up," or some variation thereof, you have to let them go. That's it. That's all, that's the only rule.
Oh, there is another rule.
Alright, there's another rule.
Anyone from the Dan clan that wishes to participate as a, uh, junior DOC card, uh, must be welcomed and trained accordingly.
Alrighty, Chief Justice.
The Dan's, correct. Oh, and the Littleman's, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I'll make exceptions, Chief Justice.
Alright, rehabilitate anything.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Wages and oversight, will it just be you, the council?
Yeah, you, you two will get paid according to the ability to sign on as DOC. Um, we'll see in the future about other people. That'll be the bare bones to start with is you and Mr. Charles, uh, in terms of oversight, yes, it'll be the council.
Chief Justice, with one fell swoop, you have saved this city from damnation. Hallelujah.
Here, here.
Anybody, uh, anybody, anybody against this grand idea?
Nope.
It's brilliant. It's amazing. It's about how I figured it'd go.
Alright, well, here are no objections that, I guess, passes unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. Uh, before you leave, go ahead and come over here to me and give me your state IDs, um, and I'll reach out to you for some other information I'll need.
By the way, Carmine, there's no cannibalism in Lord of the Flies, so there was no eating.
Really?
Alright, go ahead when you're ready, Bobby.
Mine's a one triple six.
Carmine?
One, three, seven, five.
Okay, I will need to send y'all an email to gather some other information for your staff profiles, but we'll do that later. Uh, I'll get the process moving now, uh, throughout the meeting. Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright.
Appreciate it.
That's all for us, I guess. Uh, I bid you all adieu. Till next time.
Have fun.
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
Yeah, till next time.
Thank you all. I'll, I'll let you out, I'll let you out. Uh, wait through the bodies?
Oh my god, dude, I was so fucking
Inmate, inmate, hey, don't get close inmate! Don't get fucking close!
God, that's beautiful.
It really is.
Uh, while we, uh, do have limited time, would, would you like the, uh, the audit team to just rapid-fire off their results?
Okay, so, uh, let's be clear, we have, uh, two and a half hours, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, and take your time with the audit. I wanna hear your thoughts and everything.
Okay, uh, well, so, uh, first off, um, once again, the, the audit team, we've been, uh, kind of working within MRPD for officially about, uh, five days now. Um, I can speak for myself, is I, I'm mainly a systems kind of guy, you know, I'm not much of a people person. When I personally went in there, uh, when I was talking to people, I was specifically talking about their, uh, systems, their current procedures, et cetera, et cetera. Um, other audit members obviously may have focused on different things, and my particular conclusions, uh, were not reached with the help of any member of the audit team. Uh, so with that being said, I'll, I'll just give my findings here in a couple minutes and then I will invite the, uh, the other auditors to share theirs. Uh, the full report is gonna be in the city council doc, uh, ch-ch-ch, uh, three, zero, seven, three. And the, the TLDR is, I just feel the current high command i- is too gun-shy. I think that, uh, they are operating on a mindset that would be great if this was a police department of hundreds, uh, but it is not. It is a police department of, uh, less than a hundred. They are wanting to cook everything to per- perfection and ship it out the door. And once again, while all that is admirable, it is causing a lot of bottlenecks, a lot of slowdowns. And I believe that high command should embrace the current thinking that this council was founded on, that we could push new legislation, that we could push new ideas, and if it's not working, simply change it, amend it, or take it back. Uh, just some examples is, uh, with the, uh, the PD chain of command. They are wanting to cook a sergeant until they know for sure that sergeant is ready. I do not think they have time for it. I think they should have picked the best person that they thought for the job weeks ago. And if that pu- person wasn't working out, simply replace them. As I understand it, their dispatch and, uh, receptionist departments are floundering, you know, they're kind of doing their own thing, which, once again, understandable. High command has bigger things on their plate, but they could have picked someone to run it, give them the, uh, the authority to, to do something with it. And yeah, it may not be the best thing, but it's certainly better than what they're doing with it now. You know, they could have picked a, a head of dispatch, circled back with them in, in a couple weeks. And if dispatch is not doing as well as they want, once again, just find someone else. You know, some progress is better than none and, uh, shipping it out to door to, to perfection. I believe that most of the problems, systemic issues, mind you, with this PD would be solved if the, uh, the ca- the high command, sorry, was, was just willing to take chances, much like th- this council was, and, uh, you know, change it a- as time goes on. Um, I don't wanna take up too much time here, as I've said, uh, you know, the, uh, e- e- everything else i- is kind of like with my thoughts in there. If anyone has any specific questions on that, you're more than welcome to ask me, but that, that is the huge problem. I, I will, uh, tack something on here specifically for the shifts, uh, shift one and two, a- as I understand it, you know, from the, the interviews I've conducted, is on the is on the right track. It is trending upward. Um, it may not be going as fast as this city would like, but I, I think a, a chief and assistant chief may help with that.
Pick up, sorry.
Shift three, uh, in my opinion, that's another story altogether.
Hold on, I want a brief inter- introduction.
Yes.
Uh, I spoke with Captain Slacks yesterday, and the sentiment you just said is, uh, something that he mirrors.
That they're just on, like, they're not bold enough, basically?
No, they, the, they're not going as fast as the city was. It was, it was like, uh, yeah.
Uh, now, like I said, like shift one, two, they, they're, they're trending upwards. Could they use a little help? Maybe, but I, I think a chief or assistant chief w- will help, uh, get them on the right track. Shift three, however, uh, shift three is a different story altogether. Uh, in my opinion, uh, shift three numbers are down so bad that it is a complete dumpster fire. Uh, all these problems I explained, it applies to shift three as well. But their issue is compounded by the fact that they have a third of, of the, the active officers of, of shift two and half of that of shift one. Um, my general recommendation for that, uh, you know, firing off the hip of just what I had is, uh, they, they need to reach out and attempt to cultivate transfers, uh, so that, uh, you know, I, they should not push people right out the door, you know? Uh, that, that you're not wanting to throw the lowest quality meat you can on the street just because you need numbers. But I think they should actively reach out to other departments, uh, nationwide, and perhaps see if there are any, uh, transfers available who are interested in shift three. Uh, that way, they already have a lot of prior experience, and, and that could be like a one-time injection to, uh, to bump up their numbers. Um, but, yeah, o- o- overall, uh, their high command just needs to be a little more bold. Chief and assistant chief should help with that. Um, I'm also making the official recommendation. Um, I don't want to say that the audit should continue in its full form, but maybe that the, uh, the, the team still be a place, uh, officially on, on like a, uh, a, a less frequent level to, uh, circle back with the, uh, the chief and assistant chief here in like a week or two, to see if things are improving with a, a chief or an assistant chief and, uh, you know, kind of see if they continue to stay on the right track.
Man.
Uh, Jenny, uh, would, would you like to, uh, speak next?
Yeah, for sure. Um, I mirror a lot of what Maltin is saying. Uh, I've looked at more solution based that are things that we can implement to ease the strain. I found four sections within the PD in which they need support. The first one is money. Uh, I know that they need to be self-sustainable. However, right now, the PD have nothing to be self-sustainable on other than their own wages. An average officer has to work a minimum of four hours a day to even break even when it comes to repairs, food, and everything else. Uh, something I'm proposing to come forward that is kind of out of our reach, but a, a suggestion that may help. I know they may be changing the works. Uh, uh, one is that currently, when any fine is given, the officer receives fifteen percent with eighty-five percent of it going to the state. A better investment would probably, if after that fifteen percent, the eighty-five was broken equally between the state and a PD budget. That means that they are working for the money and that they, it's their, uh, own work that they are benefiting from. Uh, I think it would ease a lot of the stress on the officers, especially when it comes to repairs and it comes to just general day-to-day living. Uh, they don't have, they don't make crazy wages. They make less in an hour than a lot of nearly every single job within the city. Uh, the second one is retention training. Uh, FTOs are currently burnt out, especially in, in shift three. Uh, they have not enough boots on the ground. On average, um, the peak I saw was nineteen in a meeting. But the daily day-to-day was, was ranging from four units on duty all the way up to fifteen. Um, they do not have enough officers on the ground to go to every call, which means that right now, the, uh, the, they echo the sentiment that the, uh, the city is not happy with them, because they can't get to them. Uh, my suggestion was to get more transfers, very similar to Maltin, one time, uh, three to four, uh, transfers for each shift. Uh, give them two, three sessions with an FTO, put them into PPO for a couple of days, and get them on the streets, so the knowledge that they will become FTOs in the near future. This would aid the strain on the current FTOs and also help with the numbers that are currently in the city. Uh, the third thing is punishment. A lot of the officers had a lot to say, regardless whether they had dab points or not. Uh, they had a lot to say on it. Uh, a lot of them feel that, th- there's a lot of feelings around the punishment within the PD. A big thing is the lack of using dabs to, to teach, and them all being used rather as a punishment. Um, a way in which I think this could be countered is if when an officer hits ten dabs, uh, their, their, uh, dabs are given over to the civilian oversight, Maltin's, uh, group to be reviewed independently. Uh, it established a presidency, um, sorry. Sorry, uh, to let them be reviewed independently, because right now, the captains are judged during executioner, a lot feel uncomfortable about that. This would ease on them, it would allow them to step back. And for the officers to feel that they have a say in their punishment, because a lot of officers felt their dab points weren't always, they were, they could have done better if it was a conversation rather than just a straight dab. As I said, some of them felt they'd been used maliciously against them. This would allow for both the captains to have their say and also the people that are being dabbed. Uh, the final one is chain of command, and it's kind of the same as Maltin. Uh, they currently don't have a fully working chain of command. And, uh, because of that, they have very good officers in multiple, multiple ranks. Uh, with, sorry, within just two ranks, they have the captain role as senior rank. The seniors are currently working as like a pseudo co- command. However, not all the seniors are the same level of experience as each other. Some are suited for better, some are suited for more. I think if they have a fully fashioned command, it would stop the bottleneck that a lot of feel that the captains aren't available and the seniors don't know stuff. Uh, the final point, which you've already covered, was that I didn't think they needed a commissioner, they need a chief of police who can start building in their experience and to start getting those, uh, place, those roles and ranks in place. Thank you.
Sorry, pause, uh.
Hold on.
Hold on, wh- we're, no, real quick. Uh, what is Xavier doing?
He's filming.
When did we agree on that?
What the? That is.
In fact, I brought that up at the first meeting and you guys shot it down.
As you noticed, and.
Who, who shot it down? Okay, Xavier, destroy the tape. Um, let's vote on that now, okay, real quick.
I would like these meetings to be filmed and distributed publicly and viewable to the people of Los Santos, because we are in here behind closed doors representing them technically. All in favor?
A quick question?
I have a comment about it. I, I was in favor of this. And I, I don't remember exactly who said it or who said no. But several people spoke up and said there were things we were gonna discuss that probably weren't appropriate to be disseminated in terms of how we talk about the topics, meaning.
That was me, yeah.
I, I, I was also against it for that reason. I'm more than fine with releasing, uh, mean it, m- meeting minutes or whatever you want to call them, but yeah, I'm against a, a straight.
Uh, speak, speak up, Crane, by the way. Um.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, why? What are you guys afraid of?
It's not that we're afraid of anything, it's just that there are certain topics that we end up having to discuss that are just, um, a bit unusual, um, and difficult to. I, I don't.
Was I, I, I.
Inappropriate for public consumption, I guess.
I also, you know, i- if we're going to bring someone into film, I think there should be a discussion on who that is. Uh, I'll just.
Sure.
Someone pick back.
I, I proposed this, I wanted Ursula to come in and report on the meetings. Uh, and, and I, I, I felt like I was voted down, so if that's changed, I'm not against it, I just, I want to know when that's changed and how.
Yeah, because we had discussed like, uh, press conferences or, you know, just dab, you know, meeting minutes afterwards, but that never, nothing ever came of that.
Uh, we'll compromise. Um, this meeting can remain unfilmed. Uh, however, I would like it put to a vote that it can be filmed in the future with the caveat that, uh, we as a group can select who will be filming it. Uh, I'm not, a- and I, as I'm proposing this, I, I'm not suggesting that it be edited or trimmed down or whatever, I just want the full meeting uh, to be consumable to the public.
Yeah, I, I agree. I honestly, I think, hell, at one point, my vision for the council was even with, uh, Ms. Wright, that there might be like public comment sections now. Having experienced these meetings, I don't think that's possible, given that we're already reaching four hours without a bunch of yokels in here. Uh, but I do think that, you know, putting it out there is a good thing.
Uh, let's put to a vote.
Into it.
Oh, okay.
Can I, I just have a question.
Uh, sure.
Do, do we actively already have the, like, the s- the transcript being kept that's pushed out, or has that not happened yet either?
Well, Alex takes notes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
So what would be the main difference between the notes being taken and then a, a video being taken?
Well, meeting minutes are in the eye of the writer, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't, it, there's a lot of interpretation that occurs when you're recording things versus the tone of someone actually speaking.
I, I think, I think our constituents should be able to see how we react in real time to, uh, certain ideas.
Uh, what if we had someone in here who was speaking on something and they didn't want to be filmed? Would we bar them from being in here, or would we pause it for filming?
Um, I think it would be important to inform them that the meeting is filmed, and if they have a problem with that, maybe they shouldn't show up.
Well, legally, we have to. It's a two-party state.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Is this building, uh, public?
Hmm.
Well, we're, we're making the meeting public, aren't we?
Yeah, so, I mean, they wouldn't need, we, we, he wouldn't need permission to film.
We're, if you're, if you're in, okay.
Hmm. Well, yeah, because if this is a public space, then he doesn't need permission.
Well, we're locking the door, aren't we?
Right.
Uh.
So it's not so public.
Okay, well, sure. If they don't want to be filming, then I, I'm content with them not being here.
Yeah, I think, I think, frankly, if people want to come and spit their ideas, they should be willing to stand by them.
Amen to that. Um, let's vote it. Uh, for the purpose of, uh, public filming, uh, for the purpose of no editing, uh, full, unadulterated, uh, one hundred percent, five-hour video to the public after the meeting has concluded. Are we in favor, any nays? Uh, surprisingly, it is unanimous, despite what I heard five minutes ago. I am pleased by this. Uh.
I just wanted a discussion about who it is, but I'm, I'm good with it. I, I'll stand by anything I say here.
Yeah, I think, I think we should have Ursula do it, because she's really good about.
It works, yeah.
About publishing the video and documenting and distributing and all that.
She's amazing.
And when people actually, you know, when she actually tweets out things, people actually read it, so.
It's a good point, yeah.
Uh, sick. I mean, I'm in favor of Ursula too. Does anyone have any other suggestions or anything like that? Okay, Ursula shall be. I haven't seen her around in a bit, so we might have.
Yeah, actually.
Well, we'll have to find somebody who's doing new stuff, because it should be someone who's interested in that craft already.
So I, there, we got Moose Knuckles, but I hate the sound of his voice.
No, he's a, he's a lawyer now.
Oh, okay.
Um, I'm about to give him a bar license in the next week or so.
He backed up two of my doctors. He did great. I'll vouch for him too.
Uh, we have, uh, First Temple also does new stuff. Uh, there's another clown who does a newsletter that I actually just beat Moose Knuckle. Um, I, I'll ask around and I'll look around. Uh, I, there are a couple of people who've been diligently doing new stuff. Cool. Uh, what the fuck were we talking about before that? Sorry, guys.
We halfway through the audit.
Oh shit.
If we're done with the discussion on filming, um.
No.
It, is there still a reason for this individual to be in the room?
Uh, no, no. Thank you, Xavier, for your time. Uh, this individual is Xavier Monroe, he's a lawyer. Good one, too.
Yeah.
I submit you exagger.
Hmm.
Um, all right, cool. Uh, I had something I, I wanted to say to, uh, Ms. Hall. Uh, and that is, uh, we had some text messages, and you said, uh, you said that there was something in your report that I would not like. I was curious what that is.
Oh, just the thing that I didn't, you'd like, that I didn't like, that I didn't want there to be a commissioner. I was.
Yeah, yeah, I feel like we, we all simultaneously kind of reached the same conclusion.
Yeah.
Uh, like at different points, so that's pretty cool. Okay, uh, does Mr., uh, Owen Svensson wish to speak now?
I'm still, we're getting paid for this, and my only bargaining power is not giving my reports until I get paid, so.
That's true.
Um, I mean, I'm pretty sure Jenny Hall's getting paid. Have you not been paid?
No.
I've got part of my payment, so the other half comes tonight.
Yeah, there was, there was one, but then I was needing to have a conversation with Alan before I paid out everybody.
Yeah, we can authorize, we can authorize people at the same rate as Ms. Hall. Which is.
It's fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Okay, so, is it payable now, or?
If you give me your information, then I can get it paid as soon as we finish the meeting.
Okay. We're gonna wait for Willie, or should I just go ahead?
Wait, where's Willie at?
He walked out for a minute.
I mean, you could, you could give your part and.
Well, I'd prefer to have my emotional support glory here.
Yeah, I'll go get him. Fair enough. Oh, Mr. Arthur, you want to, you want back in? Okay, no problem. Hop on in.
Welcome back, Mr. Cannon.
Sorry, I had a small emergency.
No worries.
Willie. Willie. Have you guys seen Willie Glory?
Uh, my phone is a scuff, I believe, Owen's, Owen.
Yeah, I'm trying. Hey, can somebody open the door? Bam.
Couldn't find him.
Shit.
Yeah, we, we can wait, though.
I can, I got something to bring up in the meantime.
Sure.
Um, I am pleased to announce that I have been working closely with the manufacturers and suppliers uh, at Ammunition. Uh, there were some supply chain interruptions due to robberies that were occurring down to the docks. Uh, some of their, I guess, cargo crates were broken into and supplies were stolen. Uh, they have found an alternate shipping route with more secure, uh, containers. And we are now restoring service, so I'm pleased to announce that as of Monday, uh, in the sort of NA time zone, we will start rolling out civilian weapons licenses. Uh, the rough, uh, idea right now is to, uh, charge twenty-five thousand dollars for the license. Citizens will be permitted via the, uh, salespeople at Ammunition to purchase one firearm per week. It will be registered to them. This is to stop, you know, bad faith proliferation. Uh, but everything should be moving forward well. And I am under the impression also that these firearms will have, uh, modifications made to them. So they may be, uh, a little more fancy than what we're used to.
Um, I'm around pretty frequently. Uh, would it be all right if, uh, the mayor and the deputy mayor had the ability to issue these licenses and chief of staff too? I mean, my wife has, uh, a lot of experience handing out licenses in the past.
No.
Well, why not?
The DOJ handles all licensing. That includes businesses, that includes guns, every.
I, I don't even get to issue a business license?
Uh, no, the business licenses are referred to the DOJ for issuance, because as I directed to you in one of our very first meetings, there are several checks that I have to go through after your approval process with the state. Thus, the important part is that while you approve the concept of the business and the issuance to us, we have another check before we can even do our job.
So why not just have the DOJ handle all the business shit? Why am I the middleman for you guys?
Well, you're making all the decision, the state just does a final check, that's it. All, like a background check.
Yeah, that's fair, and you know, I'm perfectly willing to do more work, I don't mind. Uh, it seems like potentially that my involvement in that is just an extra step that is completely unnecessary if that's the case.
Well, no, because we aren't handling anything substantive, we're only a procedural element.
Well, I, why not just be both, then?
Because I have no knowledge or desire to regulate commerce. It's not in my job description.
You are regulating commerce, though, by being the final check on the matter.
Please.
I, I am, well, Max, this is a beautiful, uh, example here. So much like the folks down at the PD who misunderstand the legislation with the state empowering you to oversee the PD, uh, as you are an agent of the state, so am I. I am not actively making decisions for the mayor's office on behalf of, uh, myself, I am simply just relaying the will of the state as an agent.
Okay, um. I, I could do that just as well as you, I think, at this point. At least for as long as I'm mayor.
For business licenses, sure. For other licenses, I tend to disagree.
Okay, um. Sure, I, I, I will take on that burden of responsibility. I'll, I'll speak to the requisite uh, people to do so. Um, I think that, i- i- like, I've spoken to a lot of mayors in the past, um, and it. And it, my wife can attest to this. Uh, a lot, lots and lots of people come to her for business ideas and stuff and it's a, it's a, eh, a process that I think deserves rewarding in the form of, uh, monetary compensation at the end of the day.
Oh yeah, we don't, we don't keep that money. Actually, that literally goes to the deputy mayor who handles that business.
Wait, why, why the deputy?
Well, in the past, the deputies handled it. If you're handling it, then it'll go to you. In the, in the past, the way that the system worked is that deputy mayors typically would handle the entire process of authorizing businesses. Okay, and I have, and I had no problem giving them the money. It was just simply that I was the one who had to issue the physical license.
Okay, yeah. Alright, well, if that's the case.
I, I have no interest in retaining funds from doing a procedural job.
Okay, I, I would just like to see, so I was just on, I was under the, my, my apologies. I was under the impression that the money was getting chomped up by the DOJ.
No, the only, the only people who might retain some of it is if we had a clerk do it, but that's just cuz that's their incentive to be active at city hall. Uh, but I suspect with weapons licenses, they'll have more than enough to do.
Sick, okay. Alright, nevermind then. Sick. Uh, I, I will be speaking to, uh, assist with the, the final check and whatnot.
Yeah, no, you guys, you guys should, uh, you know, we'll talk about that separately. Yeah.
Uh, alright, well, Owen, now that your emotional support glory is here, would you like to present your findings?
Good news, Glory. They're gonna pay us fifty Gs apiece.
Nice.
Can you speak up, Mr. Glory?
I said nice. Um, listen, first of all, first change that needs to happen in that police department is they gotta put up no smoking signs if they're gonna tell me to stop smoking constantly. It's bullshit. I wasted, what, dozens of cigarettes over the course of a week? Because they wouldn't put up a sign and they had to tell me to stop smoking constantly? So that's my first recommendation. No smoking signs or I get to smoke. Uh, second, I think it's important to establish that we may not like it, but there are three different shifts in that police department and there forever will be. It's not designed to the captains that there are three different shifts culturally. As far as I, as long as I've ever been a cop in this city, I mean, last time I was was five years ago, but before that it was seven years in a row. I think it's important to notice that, uh, or it's, it's important to note and Jenny, Lance, Dakota, or Billy, or even Cornwood can, uh, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but there's three shifts and to put them concisely, shift one has always been kind of more or less a retirement home. Uh, a shift where you have mostly experienced cops who take their job pretty seriously. And, uh, it's shown usually in the quality of police work. It was pretty high when I was there. I understand it's a little less high now, but that seems to be across the board. Shift two, I mean, it's pretty much the frying pan and the fryer. It's constant chaos. And, uh, lots of death, destruction, mayhem, chaos. And, uh, shift three, it's a fucking ghost town. Um. I'm not saying shift three isn't important. I'm just saying it is what it is in terms of civilian population, crime, et cetera. It can be a bit dull and, uh, it's hard to find staffing for that because of it. But I wanna, I wanna confront that, uh, the three captains, as far as I can tell, do represent their shift in some shape or form. I know that there's not a lot of fans in here of those captains. I can get into that in a minute. But from my understands, they're kind of the scapegoats to this whole thing. So while I haven't met Ruth, I've heard a lot about her. And not a lot of good things, but I suspect this might upset a few people. I would probably see eye to eye with Ruth more than anybody else in this room. However, as I haven't met her, it's hard for me to recommend her or pat her on the back.
Well, why, 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 why do you think you would see eye to eye with her?
She's a disciplinarian at heart. She believes in the chain of commands and, uh, is strict with strike points or as they call them, dap points. Is that some kind of failed branding attempt by you?
Dap, dap.
With the P. Oh, okay. Alright, well, whatever. I mean, anyways, um, I haven't spoken to her. I spoke to her replacement or interim captain. And I, um, I see eye to eye with him on a few things. Um, anyways, what I'm getting at is I think all three captains representative of the shift more than anyone's willing to give them credit for. I think shift one comes across as a serious group and I think Ruth is a reflection of that or has instilled that mentality. But I've known it to be a, a serious shift for all my life, so it doesn't surprise me. Shift two is embedded in chaos and you need to have some leniency to survive. So I'm not surprised Slacks is the way he is. And Turner, the two words I've heard about him most are firm but fair. And I can't help but agree. He's a thoughtful man who seems considerate, gives positive feedback, but the most negative thing I've heard about him is that he's associated with Ruth, which is, I guess, a statement in itself.
I, I've got a question, uh, Owen. Um, what was the highest rank you achieved in the police department?
Um, seven years, I ended as the sheriff of the, uh, Blaine County.
So you've got experience in high command.
Absolutely. Eight months.
If you were sheriff, uh, and these were your captains or whatever, um, would you be content with their performance so far?
No, and that's what I'll get into. Um, I wanted to address that, uh, you know, they're unfit or whatever. I want to establish the, I want to set the scene for those that are civilians in this room. That, that think that there's some kind of disparity between the shifts. There is and there needs to be. But, you know, to, to get to the criticism nation, the criticism part of this.
Cuz I don't have a gun.
Audit, whatever. Um, yeah, I mean, like Lance said, it's, uh, it, it seems like they're so focused on getting the right people for their chain of commands that they don't realize the house is burning as they do it. To give an example, an analogy, a metaphor, whatever, imagine a house is on fire and you're sitting there as a fire department with a hose, deciding where best to place the water. You could spend all day and at the end of the day, you might have determined the best place to put that fi, to put the wa, you, you could save as much water as possible. And that fire is gonna go out very efficiently when you deploy it, if you spend enough time calculating. But the problem is the house is on fire. The longer you wait, the worse it gets and the more there are stress fractures that build up from it. And I think all four auditors are gonna be in agreement from what I've heard so far. It seems like the main issue is they haven't established a chain of commands. I personally would have had a chain of command on day one, day two, day three, day four, day five, day six. To be two and a half, three months in with no chain of commands is, it, it's an, I mean, listen, I, I had my, eh, eh, this feels like a conversation I had with Chief Bass or Sheriff Toretty when I was a lieutenant. Delegation, you have to delegate. These people that are captains or in the past chiefs and sheriffs have this, they want to be in such full control and they enjoy it so much that they don't give it up and they, they wait for the perfect candidate. But you don't get to, you don't, a, as a famous general once said about the, uh, what is it, the Afghanistan war, you, you don't get to go to war with the army you want. You go to the war with the army you have. You have to promote the sergeants that you have, not the sergeants you want. There's not gonna be a perfect sergeant that walks in unless Stubble does. Cuz he was perfect. But regardless, uh, they need to promote a chain of commands and they needed to do it three months ago. It's a shame they haven't to this day. Um, it sounds like from our conversations with them, their mind has changed and they will have one in a week or less. But I think it's, uh, I think it's a little, it's a little, it's, it's a little late. Um. Uh, what other issues are there? I mean, I think they're waiting for the chain of commands to implement any kind of unit or department that would further gain, like further interest in the police department. So it seems like a major issue, not enough cops in the streets. I'm gonna confront this right away. There will always be an issue with not enough cops in the streets. There's only one time in history. We had too many cops on the streets and that i- is by far an exceptional period in term, I mean, that's, that is the exception to the norm. Um. And I think their focus, and I can't disagree with Slacks' logic on this, is they don't want sub-departments or units because they want everyone focused on training. However, the part they haven't considered is that by focusing everyone on training, they might be turning away people that would be interested in sub-departments but not training. Let's say, for example, you have ten cops. Two wanna be detectives, two wanna be cargo fast unit guys, two wanna be SWAT team members, right? You might lose out on some of those potential hires because there is no department for them and they're not interested in training, therefore reducing your total numbers. I think they're waiting for the chain of command for what it sounds like to institute any kind of sub-department or unit, but, I mean, plenty of these cops are interested in what, whatever you might, whatever unit you can think of, uh, you know. I mentioned a SWAT, SWAT team or detective unit, a, a street gang unit. You know, a fucking pursuit unit we had in the past, what a clusterfuck that was, motorcycle cops, I mean, whatever, litter, litter patrol, whatever. There are cops that would be interested in doing these things, but they can't because they have to FTO first. And then they spend two months FTOing and they're burned out and they don't wanna go and do it anymore cuz they don't get to do anything interesting. Also, with the, uh, promotional stuff, it is a problem when you imagine yourself to be a base, uh, a cadet or something to come into the department a month ago. If you have seen the same seniors not make any movement in the past month towards sergeant, what makes you think you're ever gonna get senior? It's, it's a, it's a, it's a cascading issue where if seniors aren't getting promoted, officers aren't getting promoted and cadets aren't feeling like they're gonna get promoted and it leads to a morale issue up the board and I'm not saying you should cave to their demands, but there's gotta be something more reasonable in three months with no sergeants, no lieutenants, no corporals, whatever. Sergeant majors, gunnery sergeants, whatever, whatever the ranks may be. They, they have to do something in that regard. Um, another big issue that was brought up to me, uh, strike points, staff points, whatever you wanna call it.
Go on.
They're a bunch of whiners. And I'm not gonna leave this meeting with another friends. I'm sorry, Cornwood. But these dap points, as far as I can tell, everybody who's whining about them, a bunch of fucking whiners. It seems like ninety-nine percent of them are justified and if not more, the, listen, the only thing I can say in Cornwood's defense would be he does spend a lot of time in this city and he does have a really good relationship with the civilians. And I really wish they would weaponize that, not in like a negative way, but I wish they would have put him in some kind of role where he can interface with the community and build relationships. So he doesn't feel like he has to rail against his commands. But I will never support someone railing against his commands. I just can't do it. It's not in my nature. I was a soldier and then I was a cop. I, I love Cornwood. I spent a lot of time on duty with him back in the day. I think he's a fine officer. But as far as I can tell, almost every strike point I've seen authorized has been, well, I say strike point, but that point, it's been more than justified. The terminations I've seen, from what I can tell, have been justified. I wish I could have spoken with some of the terminated officers and maybe that would have changed my opinion, but with the information I have access to.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, brief, brief, brief interjection on the, uh, the dap stuff. Um, I don't, I, I've spoken to some of the terminated officers, actually all of them. Um, and what happened to Johnson? In Johnson's case is that, uh, the, the usual system for issuing punishment and eventual termination was skipped because he ran his mouth, you know, well, it is what it is, right? Uh, in the case of Mr. Denzel and Cornwood, to a lesser degree, um, they were targeted. Eh, it's my belief that they were being targeted by, uh, the now suspended Captain Ruth. Uh, eh, eh, so their problem isn't necessarily with the system or with the points and getting the points and be like, oh my God, I got more points. It's more that they felt like they were walking on eggshells when other officers weren't and they felt like it was, you know, hard for them to do their job as a result. Uh, I, I, I will say with confidence that it, from what I've heard from them and other officers, that I, I do feel like they were being unfairly targeted. There was an in, uh, an instance in which an off-duty Captain Ruth, as verified by logs of, uh, cars being taken from MRPD and of, and, and an officer seeing her return, uh, Cornwood, Aziz, um, and who was the third one, Cornwood?
Uh, Denzel.
Denzel. So two, thir, two-thirds of the people who racked up the most dap points were being stalked by an off-duty Captain Ruth in a CVPI with police equipment on her. Uh, and when they went back to MRPD to try to find out who was in that cop car cuz she, she didn't show up on dispatch or on their GPS, they found that it was, it was Ruth off-duty following them. So eh, eh, their issue is, is more than, um, just getting the points. Eh, eh, it's that they, they were being targeted. That's all. Eh, 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 it's more, it's more how the, eh, the system was weaponized against them, not that the system itself is bad. I don't think it's bad either.
I, I, I would expect nothing less of you to have that perception of it, granted the fact you unfired Cornwood. But I think there's another way to view that situation. I didn't hear about that, but just from hearing it myself, why do you, why do you suspect, uh, nefarious motives immediately? Could she be surveilling them to see if she herself was wrong in watching their conduct? She was trying to exonerate them? How do you know her intentions? I didn't speak with her.
I, I, I know her intentions because it's against their protocol to go off-duty and to take a cop car off-duty and to carry a gun off-duty to do all of these things that eh, eh, it is most certainly nefarious because she wasn't even following protocol at all. She broke the rules for herself.
Don't they make their own protocols, the captains?
The protocol is written by them and she didn't follow it. Eh, the, are the rules for them or is, are they for everybody?
Eh, can we?
Probably we need to debate SOPs at the moment.
Well, we don't because I'm right. Please continue, Mr. Owen.
Um, additionally, there's no incentives to being an FTO. Uh, there's no pay increase. There's no, in the past, we've used insignias or patches on your shoulder, car incentives, whatever. There's, there's multiple ways to incentivize FTOing. And, uh, there's no incentive whatsoever to be in an FTO. So you're doing it out of the kindness of your heart. Um, there's no understanding, uh, that you have essentially a, uh, you know, you, you, you're carrying a crutch with you the entire time you're on duty. Um, additionally, um, the cadets, it seems to be a stranglehold on trying to get cadets enough FTO time. I think that there's things they could do to, uh, get cadets more time in the city but not tie up FTO time. And it sounds like from Captain Slacks' understanding, they're not allowed to do it for whatever reason. There's not enough pay for cadets to do these kind of things. I suggested having cadets, uh, tethered to the courthouse as security, having cadets working reception, having cadets working in the cells to help with processing without being tied to an FTO. They would have no powers to arrest or pursue or whatever. They would be simply learning to how to interact with the public, lawyers, criminals, whatever, while not absorbing FTO time. Uh, additionally, um, this would require more resources than just pay, but a paddy wagon type service with cadets, they get a van, they drive a van around and they help officers on existing scenes with scene control and transporting. It takes the weight off qualified officers, sworn officers so they can go back to doing patrol work and they're not tied up with doing bullshit. But they would need access to a van of some kinds. Um, and again, pay. Eh, eh, they wouldn't have the power to patrol and arrest or anything, but they would just simply be reinforcements. It would, uh, get more cops on the streets and let the cops that were on the streets actually, you know, stop crime. Um, another thing dropping from, uh, switching gears from the FTO topic, there's no proactive policing in this city as far as I can tell. The most that they do is patrol high crime areas. Um, a lot of, I've heard a lot of nine-one-ones and three-one-ones. Cornwood, I'm, I'm sure could testify to the amount of robberies that go on. I think those have to be priority number one. Civilians getting hurt has to be priority number one. I don't give a shit how many, uh, carjackings there is or whatever. A nine-one-one should be your highest priority. Um. They need to be more proactive in that. I don't know, I mean, undercover work could be a possibility. Unmarked, I guess, is simpler. Um, just having officers stationed in those areas of working with civilians, people who have been robbed, coming in, showing the cops where it happens, walking them through it, showing them where to station themselves, et cetera. That means that happened, and we did it happen two months ago. Um. We'll check, we'll do some last thing.
Also, uh, good news, everyone. After Svensson speaks, I suggest a, uh, a short break? Question mark? Five minutes?
Sure.
Please.
Alright.
Oh, the, the final thing, um, there's no protocol for officers if they have to make a traffic stop and, uh, have a boner. I witnessed myself, eh, he just had to drive off, so might need to do a waistband protocol for in the academy or something.
We, maybe, maybe like, maybe like chastity belts for every officer or?
I, I, I wouldn't recommend that. Um, that might be hard to justify, but just like a simple course if you need to get out of the car and issue a ticket, just what to do with it. It seems like officers aren't educated on that.
Maybe we can, uh, put like standard issue pictures of like their own grandmothers and like the glow box they could pull out.
Could do. I, I just think action needs to be made. It seemed like there was resistance on that when I asked.
I don't know. We have some officers that might, I don't know, you know.
Like a Silas belt?
I'm not saying that. I don't think you should force them to wear garments like that, but just.
Yeah, just tighten it a notch, you know. Were you, were you a Mormon, Svensson?
Um, I was in the past, um.
Is that why you disagree?
No, well, I'm not a Mormon anymore. One of the previous mayors lied to me and I lost my faith as a result.
Oh, damn. Okay. Well, I already tried to make, uh, Catholicism the state religion. They won't let me do it, so.
Anyways. Anyways, um, I'll wrap it up.
God, Trav's Dan voice is so fucking screechy, dude. Yeah.
All right, we're taking five then?
Wait, was that it?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the last.
Oh, okay. Yeah, let's take five, everyone. Uh, good, good meeting so far. Very good. Very uh.
There's people yelling outside.
I need to run the mayor over.
You need, you need to run me over?
Sir, please, please leave the area, sir. Sir, please leave the area.
What up, Bob?
Any food?
Sir, leave the area, please. I'm leaving the area, man. Leave the area, sir.
Read your fucking text messages.
You tell the mayor Trevingle Dan's coming for him. Sir, sir, leave the area, please.
Cornwood, hey, Cornwood. You uh, put in my profile a ward in the Bolingbrook Penitentiary. Go ahead, do it. Can't do that?
Hmm. How we doing so far, you think?
Hmm.
It's warm. Yeah. I have a gun, man.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna take this opportunity to go to the bathroom. Oh, fuck. Hmm.
I gotcha. Hello?
Hey. I need, I need you to find out how many people, how many deer people can hunt in an hour.
Uh, let me call someone.
Okay. I'll call this number back.
All right, what, what, is this your work number?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Bye-bye.
Let me, bye-bye.
Hmm.
Sure.
Ah, did she just crane?
He might be thinking about cigarettes.
You gotta get those, man. You gotta catch those.
Almost.
Almost, man.
Bam, 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 bow.
Hey, Cornwood. Go long. Oh! That helps. That's pretty good. You got some moves.
Hello?
Yeah.
Uh, I was told roughly eight to ten in a very perfect world, or if you're able to get all twelve deer, you can get twelve, but that is unlikely.
Holy shit. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right.
Still, that's an insane amount.
All right. Okay. Okay, I gotta, I gotta go.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Yeah, I think we just bring, bring that one up when uh, you know, we, we go to speak about it.
I, I wanna take a second to thank all the auditors for their time, uh, and effort. I know that a lot of you are ex-cops. And a lot of you have either chosen not to be cops or were just not hired for whatever reason. Uh, thank you. I know it may dredge up old memories or wounds or what have you, and I know it wasn't easy. Uh, I'm doing some part because I've been interviewing cops and I know what it's like, so thank you.
I'll say you're welcome when I get my fifty grand.
Okay. Judge Glory, would you like to give the last auditor's opinion?
Uh, yeah, so I, I, I really don't have that much of a voice. I've been sick, but I did, you know, wanna do this audit. Uh, so I'll, I'll just.
Sounds so sad.
A few things here since it seems like we're all pretty much in agreement with their observations. Uh, one thing we didn't really touch on was uh, Flop Dugong. No one mentioned that he needs to do a lot more police work and stop frolicking in the meadows.
Could, could, could you elaborate on that? What do you mean, he's fro- frolicking in meadows?
I think that's very base, Willie.
Thank you. He had four or five incidents in the entire month of February.
And uh, this man's a, a, a senior officer?
Yes.
So can you elaborate on the actual frolicking? Like, what, what is happening exactly?
He's an ex-ranger. I mean, Willie's got his, I tried, we tried to send him into the sun as my final act as sheriff with the rest of the state officers, but alas, we got stopped. Anyway, Willie, do you wanna elaborate?
Um, yeah, pretty much. I think he's spending too much time up in the hills picking up dogs, eating berries off trees or something. I'm not sure. Um, I thought that needed to be pointed out. Um, I think we covered just about every other aspect uh, that we all observed, and I, I'll send Malton my report so you could have what I found in writing. Um, I apologize, I can't talk more, but Junetti says I have COVID, but I don't believe him.
Yeah, I don't believe doctors either. Good word from Willie.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just keep this mask on.
I guess, uh, th- does anyone here have any questions for any of the auditors specifically?
Nope. All I need are their state IDs before they leave, so I make sure they get paid.
Uh, also, I uh, did make the uh, changes to the legislation. I'll read it out really quick so we have everyone's consent, cuz they did say it was unanimous. Uh, I've added a line in the bullet points of the powers, the mayor's office reserve, which reads initiation of chief of police and assistant chief of police selection. Mayor or deputy mayor will collect names submitted by the LSP in order to submit them to the state, same as the commissioner.
Well, before we continue, um, I, I spoke with Malton about this, and uh, and he, he did touch on it in his, his speech. Um, I think that the chief of police should be able to pick their assistant.
Oh, okay. Well, then I will just get rid of that. Uh, a chief of police and assistant chief of police of the LSP are empowered to carry out the functions of the LSP at the highest level as the direct commanding officers to the current captains and existing command structure. These positions will be nominated slash selected from a pool of officers, and I will edit that to say this position, and then note the chief of police selects the assistant. Okay.
Etta, my state ID, if you don't have it, is eleven hundred.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Owens was the only profile that wasn't coming up. I just got Judge Glory's as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
What'd she say?
She needs your state ID when you.
No, yeah, he, I already got Owens. Uh, it was just that yours was the only one not showing up in the, the.
Three, four, five, nine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I've amended it to read a chief of police and assistant chief of police of the LSP are empowered to carry out functions of the LSP at the highest levels, direct commanding officers, the current captain, existing command structure. Chief of police will be nominated, selected from a pool of officers, senior officer above and appointed by the state via the mayor's office. The assistant chief of police will be appointed by the selected chief of police.
I have some uh, final notes for the auditors, cuz we have been talking to seniors and stuff. Um, these are a very, so how many pages did you write of notes, uh, chief of staff?
Uh, forty-seven.
Forty-seven pages. Uh, most of these are transcripts plus uh, you know, bullet points of general findings. Um, here is some keywords. Uh, DAP came up in interviews fifty-four times among seventeen interviews. FTO came up twenty-nine times. Uh, cadet came up twenty-two times. Command or lack of chain of command came up thirty times. Uh, Barrick Johnson and Ruby York came up the most for high command positions with a Jeffrey Bones coming up second most. Um, training and retention were the most frequently cited issues with the downstream effects from the chain of command or lack thereof as the most frequently cited issue for many roadblocks aspiring officers face, lack of delegation, uh, uh, the fleshing out of command. Uh, these, these are just very brief clip notes. Uh, we're gonna pass these uh, the interviews and stuff along to Malton as well. That's all.
Yeah, the last thing I, I just wanna clarify here, um, before I guess the, the auditors are, are released. Um, is there any objections to a, a lighter version of this circling back in about a week or so to get the pulse of how people are feeling with like the, the new chief and assistant chief and uh, see if things are continuing in the right direction?
I think a week's too short personally. People got time to cook, right?
Yeah.
Hmm.
If you, if you came to the council after our first meeting after a week, we wouldn't have had shit to tell you. Uh, I think, I think two weeks at least personally.
There was a common consensus as well with nearly all the interviews that I did, ranging from captains all the way down to the bottom, that they would like a continued audit within like a few months' time as well.
Yeah.
Well, we got a, we got a rough time limit, which is the expiration of Max's term, so we can certainly schedule something.
All right, and then I guess we just revisit it down the line then.
All right. I get the picture.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. Thanks, everyone.
Someone get the door?
Thank you.
Get better, Willie.
Yeah.
Uh, your IDs expire, just so you know, if you're driving.
I don't fucking care. I have a car.
All right, that's right.
Based as hell.
I'm just gonna pretend.
You, you, you coming back in? Sorry, I saw you trying to walk back in. You're honorable. Oh, 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 thank you. Owen booked me for terrorism, guys.
Cool.
Wow.
What do you mean booked you?
Uh, he's the one.
Oh, oh, back in the day. I, I thought you meant recently. I was like. Like, well, shit, that's a curveball.
Uh, so does anyone have anything they want to, uh, now that we've gotten out of uh, dense territory, does anyone have anything they'd like to present to the table?
Something quick. Oh, uh, mine, mine's the easiest. I just wanted to let you know real quick. Uh, hunting is apparently become much more lucrative. Uh, according to the information my head of the clerks over there, Ms. Mushkin Domino has gathered, uh, apparently people are receiving nine hundred and fifty dollars per animal pelp, per deer right now. Uh, and a rough load around a, a full hunting trip is about twelve deer. So you can do some basic math. Uh, so there has been a proliferation of hunting activity. As such, the DOJ will be raising the cost of the hunting license from one thousand to uh, thirty-five hundred.
All right, I do have two things I, I wish to bring to the table for discussion and consideration.
Hmm.
At the first is.
I could have been making so much fucking money today.
Two-eight-zero-five. This is basically a legal definition for a privilege, uh, what is covered, what's not. Um, bit of a, a word salad, but I, I feel it's uh, necessary, and I gave some examples there. Um, I would defer to Cantor to confirm, but I believe that this is a PIPA compliant uh, as well, and, and so, uh, yeah, like the, the privilege definition would uh, you know, kinda like I said in the uh, top there, it could extend off of all forms of the uh, the government sector, not just specifically for lawyers, which is what I had in mind when I wrote this up. Um, you'll note there, uh, this is the only thing that I am very on the fence, uh, so I, that is why I have it crossed out at the bottom. Um, I guess I'll, I'll uncross it so people can uh, read it. But uh, basically, uh, if an innocent person is convicted, uh, you know, is, is, is that something privilege can be broken for? But, uh, basically, uh, if an innocent person is convicted, uh, you know, is, is, is that something privilege can be broken for? Uh, I that, that is the, the main thing that I'm open to and like to discuss, but I, I would like to, uh, at the very least, push everything but the bottom one to a vote.
I think the, uh, the bottom one is probably handled cleanly by the concept that we already employ unofficially, which is if you are a direct, uh, observer or, uh, you acquire direct knowledge of a crime occurring, uh, you are required to report as much uh, as an attorney. So if you learn that someone is innocent, you would be learning. So I would assume by way of knowing that someone else did the crime, correct?
Yeah, that would be my, so if someone is getting legal advice and, uh, you know, for whatever reason, you know, someone's already in jail for that, right?
Yeah. So I would imagine that would be covered by the need to report, uh, a crime. Um, any other thoughts from anyone else on that?
Uh, I think I had a similar one that I spoke to Malton about. Uh, I don't know if this is again, in the same vein as what you were saying, uh, chief justice, but if someone seeks legal counsel to assist in like the furtherance or cover up of the crime, uh, is that failure to report? Uh, that's more along lines of like, if you're deemed like an accessory after the fact, I guess.
That would determine how skillful the lawyer is at interacting with their client. And how ethical the lawyer is considering it is a self-report.
Got it.
Now, I will say that if a lawyer decides to be, let's say, extra clever, uh, then they should hope that that is never uncovered because that would give me cause to refer them for firing. So, uh, you know, kind of goes both ways there.
Understood. I, I re-struck out the, uh, the bottom section just because, oh yeah, that, there's the existing policy that covers that mostly or already. But if anyone has any other questions about any of the other sections, I'd be happy to give my train of thought and when I wrote them. Um, and Cantor, have you had time to review this? Is this all like in line with a PIPA as well?
Yeah, it looks like it. I would apply the written approval part, um, and then verbal approval is fine by me too, honestly, if necessary. Um, yeah, it seems.
Yeah, my, my only question was because I, I wasn't sure if we covered, but if someone doesn't have next of kin listed, this would basically codify that as going to the DOJ by default if they were incapacitated.
Yeah, fair enough.
I should, uh, this is actually kind of relevant, given some things going on. Uh, but I should note that maybe we want to add a disclaimer in there just so people are aware. Uh, if, if, for example, you as an attorney, uh, are subpoenaed or a search warrant is authorized for your, you know, phone, bank records, whatever. Uh, and a judge approves that. It is the approving judge who receives the records responsibility to review the communications and ensure that no privileged discussions are being passed to the PD. Uh, but as already covered in this document, just because let's say, for example, I have Cantor as a client. Uh, if I get subpoenas in attorney and there's conversations between Cantor and I about conspiring to blow up, you know, a building, uh, that is not covered under privilege as per your documents. So I'm in support of the way you phrased everything. Because there have been some attorneys who've expressed concern about, you know, I'm a lawyer, I, my, my conversations are privileged, my phone shouldn't get subpoenaed and well, that's not how that works.
Uh, well, since it seems like no one has discussion, yeah, I would like to formally push, uh, everything in this document, uh, with the exception of the innocent person section, which I have struck out to, for the floor for a formal vote. Uh, any nares, I guess, for the easy way?
Okay, tag it approved.
All right.
I'll add that to my list to implement.
I believe that, uh, actually I might be able to add a tag here.
You should be able to. I think I gave everyone the privilege to do so.
Great work on this lens, by the way. It looks great.
Thank you. I, I cannot, but I, I'm slightly scuffed right now, so maybe if someone could do that, yep. And then the next thing I have for proposal here, uh, th- this one is a bit more dicey, but I'd, I'd like to bring it to the floor for discussion anyway. And this is specifically around notebooks that government workers use. Um, I, I could at least speak for the, the legal community. I don't know how much that this applies to other sectors, um, but for the legal community at least, for a variety of reasons, uh, lawyers greatly prefer to use their, their notebooks. Uh, reasons include just general ease of access. Uh, you know, they, they prefer to use pen and paper rather than typing things out on their phone. And also in a lot of functions, uh, their, their phones are taken away from them, particularly when it comes down to MRPD. Um, that puts a lot of information within these notebooks as what we would classify as, as privileged. And such, I, I believe that they should be afforded, uh, some basic, uh, legal protections, uh, you know, if they're carrying these notebooks around.
Makes sense to me. We just need to be, I think we've already defined this, right? We already defined who's a government employee. So we won't have legal aides trying to claim this.
Correct. So I believe, uh, yeah, and I, I guess the only thing that needs to be noted here, although I don't know if it needs to be explicitly spelt out, is lawyers. Uh, since they are government employees, uh, sometimes, right? You know, this, uh, I, I, that puts them under this a- as well, right? Just because, uh, you know, a government employee is, uh, like clocked off at the time or not, maybe not technically classified as a government employee at that moment. You know, like, let's say the lawyer is, is meeting a client at Mosley's, right? Uh, this legislation would still cover them even though like right that second, they're not a government employee under the law. Uh, I'd also like to note that, uh, as stated in the, uh, top section there. Um, while technically other government employees don't have the same level of privilege, uh, a lot of us do work with extremely sensitive information. And I believe that deserves some protections a- as well for just government employees across the sector. With that being said, I guess, does anyone have any, uh, formal questions for, for me about any sections here or anything they, they'd like to discuss regarding them?
Uh, I have one question off the top of my head.
Yes.
For like a subpoena, does that mean that the presumably the police would already be in possession of the notebook and then they would subpoena to have it looked at?
Correct. So I didn't want this to conflict with any existing processes. Evidence can still be seized by police if they feel as appropriate. Uh, you just wouldn't be able to look at it without a subpoena. And you'll notice there is also a kicker in there where if police sees something for evidence and the lawyer or whoever says like, no, there's important shit in there. Um, that's when a judge or the head of bar can't inscribe it. So basically there's two copies of it, you know, one that's still within police custody for their investigation and their subpoena. And the other for the attorney, uh, or anyone really, so that that information is not in, in a black hole for up to thirty days.
Okay, and then, uh, you know, you, you look at it and it's either relevant or if it isn't, if it isn't relevant, you return it. If it is relevant, you keep it.
Correct. And the subpoena would be delivered regardless per DOJ policy. Um, but yeah, the notebook, uh, you know, either you return it or you don't, depending on the contents of it.
Yeah, I can't stand using my fucking.
Seems good to me, uh, wraps up something that came up a while ago. So glad to see it's getting resolved. Good work.
Uh, with that being said, I guess if, uh, no one else has anything they, they'd like to bring up, once again, I'm going to bring this to a, a formal vote and start with the easy one of any nares. All right, uh, with, with that being said, uh, this is just to keep you all advised, I'm going to be formally recommending to all attorneys, because you know, not every attorney may be known in this city, that they are, uh, going to start putting just like lawyer or gov or something in, in the title of their notebook. That way it makes it easier for, uh, police if they wish. And, uh, Dakota, I, I would encourage you to pass the word along to, uh, police officers that, uh, look, if, if, if they're in doubt, uh, you know, just, just look at their profile. Every lawyer should have, uh, at least for lawyers, they, they should have a bar certified license in their, uh, in their MDT profile.
They, they, you should, they should have a staff profile.
They should have a staff. Okay, they should, actually, yeah, we resolved that whole. So yeah. If, uh, if they don't have a staff profile, they are not a lawyer at the very least.
Got it.
Yeah, the only way right now that I am allowing people to sign in as a lawyer is once they have furnished me the information to create their staff profile. So there are no exceptions.
Yo, Malton, or I guess Crane too, is Bobby Charles an official legal aide?
Legal aide is not an official title. Here's how legal aide works. Legal aide is a position that was created so that if there were no attorneys available, which often occurred mostly in shift three back in the day, uh, and someone was arrested, uh, a person could enlist a legal aide to represent them uh, under the following caveats. Number one, that person is not a bar licensed attorney. They do not represent actual legal advice. There is no confidentiality. There is no privilege. There is no nothing. That person is just a guy off the street that you said, hey, I want this guy to talk for me. That's about it. Um, they can come down to the cells, they can negotiate with the cops, they can banter, do whatever they want. Um, and that's it. Now, if they want to go to a formal bench trial, they need to find an attorney to, uh, to spearhead the case. There is no, there is no, uh, legal definition for a legal aide other than you go sign in as a legal aide. Now, if, uh, we currently had the phone app working, which we do not, when you looked at the phone app, there would be a section for legal aides so that cops could call people if there were no attorneys. Given that we don't have that, some people have taken liberties and tried to pronounce themselves official legal aides. That is not a title. It does not exist.
Okay.
Just wondering.
Yeah.
Those are the only two things I had for this week.
Doesn't anything, anyone have anything else? Dakota?
Uh, I might get a grown out of this one, but qualified immunity. Uh, I know.
What about it?
PD was brought up during a meeting. Uh, is, is that one of those things that, uh, you know, we're aware of, but it isn't written down? And if it is, can we write it down?
Well, to be clear, qualified immunity is not a legislative act. Qualified immunity is a concept where the executive powers are limited or afforded by the judiciary. So for example, uh, police officers are a branch of the executive, correct? They are using the police powers. The ability to commit violence against the civilian population in the name of the executive authority. So qualified immunity is simply saying that a civilian cannot, uh, sue a member of the PD individually as a person for doing their job. They may sue the department, which is why in the past we've had regulations about any civil suit against an officer must also accompany the department. And the department is responsible for fifty percent of the, uh, you know, the, the fines or the, the, the judgments reached. Uh, but qualified immunity is not something that, uh, on a base level is legislated. Now, some jurisdictions may choose to enact a more, uh, wide-reaching and expansive definition in legislation, but we've never done so because it was always beholden on the judiciary to make that call.
All right.
A little quiet.
So I, I don't know if PD are looking for it to be written down, uh, but I, I would, I would say no. Uh, I would not be in favor of writing that down because then that removes the judiciary's ability to, uh, you know, decide on nuance of different cases. If we write an all expansive idea of qualified immunity, then it removes the ability of contextual circumstances in the future to evolve and develop.
Okay, so I just, I just want to be clear though, I can, that is something qualified immunity is something that is taken into account as far as civil cases. That's what I'm, that is all I needed to hear. Okay.
The concept of an officer acting as a agent of the state is ingrained in our definitions of our branches of government. The protections working as such are considered when a judge makes a ruling on a case involving a suit against an officer. Yes.
Yep. All right, understood. I just, I heard a lot of concerns about it. If it's already considered, then that is good. Uh, the only other thing I had was, uh, moonshine, we have misdemeanor possession, moonshine, felony possession, moonshine and, uh,
Okay, that went nowhere.
Moonshine manufacturing. I had officers asking me if we can, uh, I don't know if it would need to be a new charge or we could roll moonshine into, it seems like, uh, multiple people haven't caught selling moonshine. Um, although it is not classed as a, uh, drug.
I mean, can we, can we just say, make it say drug and moonshine or vote to classify moonshine as a drug?
Uh, well, what's the, what's the penalty for?
Ninety-eight hundred dollars and a hundred and fifty months in jail.
That seems pretty steep.
It's kind of high. Moonshine makes a lot of money, but we don't know how much.
Hopefully you knew.
I mean felony possession intended to distribute uh, is, is specified for drugs and felony possession of different drugs are outlined based on the severity of them.
Right.
Let me see here. Sale of drugs defines drugs as cocaine, crack cocaine, oxymeth, LSD, marijuana, ketamine, metamorphine, heroin, the juice, lean and unknown prescription medications.
Oh, man, the juice.
And that's twenty-five months, one thousand one hundred and thirty. I mean, man. I don't know. Uh, I could bring it to the judges for discussion. I mean, it's something we can consider. I just, it's hard for me to make a spot decision without, you know, some kind of.
That's fine. I, I, I knew we weren't categorizing it as a drug itself, so I knew it technically wouldn't qualify under some of the charges that are existing. So I just know that we've actively caught people selling it.
Okay, uh, why don't you do this? If you can forward me the reports that deal with the sale of it.
Yep.
Uh, I can review them and provide them to the judges and we can have a conversation.
Okay, do you want me to just email you those?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Uh, since you said that was your last thing, are you, uh, did Watt talk to you about the VAF thing he brought to me too?
He did, but I, I'm assuming you had the same thought as I did.
Well, I, I, I just want to make sure to talk, if, if you as the LEO liaison don't want to bring it to the table, then.
I mean, I'll, I'll say, I, I think Crane will have the same reaction. He wanted to add reckless evading to the VAF point system and.
No, hang on. He did not say reckless evade. He said felony obstruction because that's what you normally charge on vehicle swaps.
Yeah.
It's our, it's our, okay.
God, I'm fucking, I'm, I'm.
If you can prove and you can articulate that the person was involved and this was written very specifically so that, uh, officers would need to corroborate, you know, radio channels, phone conversations, something to establish, you know, the, uh, organization of the crime. And thus you can get the personally owned vehicle used in the direct commission of the crime. But if we just start, you know, open it up to anytime there's a felony obstruction charge, we're going to have a problem.
Yeah.
That's what I, yeah, and same with reckless evading, I just.
There should be an extra step there where the officers have to do some legwork, in my opinion.
Agreed.
Yeah, especially given the consequences.
You get over there, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you, what do you mean?
Oh, I just, you know, I, I was over the weekend, I was on my phone, I downloaded the Honkai Star Rail. I thought I might do one of those.
I'm definitely not playing a game on my phone right now.
Okay.
The hell is a honkai?
Oh, you wouldn't understand it. It, it complicated. It's like a whole judicial thing.
Okay, I thought, okay.
Uh, any other presenters? Question mark? Uh, no, no?
No.
I can move towards anyone.
Hospital too much.
Uh, what's the stop and go thingy?
Uh, essentially just that.
Didn't we vote on that last week?
Yeah.
We, we know.
We talked about it.
We discussed it. We didn't vote on.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, it's simple. So I, I'm going to be honest, for some reason, my brain cannot just put together like the perfect traffic flow. So if you guys have any suggestions on how that should be actually like, like written, uh, please go in and write it properly, but for some reason I'm just like missing the last Lego block. Um, basically what I, what I, what was discussed and what was conceived in my brain again, when I went and wrote it down was, uh, you know, four-way stop. Uh, well, not four-way stop, a red equals stop, green equals go, green equals has right of way. Like, I feel like that, that's the way that it should work, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Cause it, well, would it be technically like a two-way stop then? While there's an active green, if it's a four. Yeah, absolutely. Cause well, would it be technically like a two way stop then while there's an active green if it's a four way stop?
I mean, it's not that complicated. You just treat it like you do when the power goes out.
Right.
It's not that hard.
Yeah, like, like a four way stop.
Hey, just, hey, uh, it's not my turn to go, so I don't go.
Well, see, that's the thing, that's the problem, right, is and that's why I specified certain things is because a green light can still happen.
Mm hmm.
So it throws in like an extra like variable. That's all.
Just means that people at the red have to be more cautious, right?
Right. They have to make sure to make a full stop and ensure that, you know, it is.
There is no oncoming traffic entering the intersection. I'll give us a stab at writing up some language.
Whoever said two way stop, that is, that is correct.
Didn't know if that would be complicated for some people in the city though, when they get to a four way stop and they say, what do you mean?
We need to make it real fucking simple.
Yeah. Yep. And I believe that's all. I, I think my my, my darling chief of staff is, is working on something possibly to present now. She's been working hard all day on it.
Oh, um, wait, which one?
Uh, the the sheet.
Oh, the.
Do you want to show that? Do you want to show that today or you just want to do another time?
Let me just do that. Let me do that next week because I'm not satisfied with the graphs yet. So just wait on that. Sorry, I'm working on something, but next week.
Sounds good.
Crane, VDM mandate.
Oh, yeah.
Say again?
The VDM mandate?
Oh, yeah. Uh, do we want, I'm gonna be honest with you. I kind of understand it. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. So VDM is about ensuring that people who are driving vehicles for state owned businesses and government employees like cops and EMS, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, are, are driving roadworthy vehicles and as such, a cop has the ability to spot check the internals of the car based on the exterior appearance.
Yes.
And if the internals of the car are below a dangerous, non-working level, then the person can be advised to fix the vehicle or receive a fine within a certain amount of time.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I don't get any issue. I can put it in. Anybody got a problem?
And if we feel like it down the road, we can extend this out to be all vehicles and not just work vehicles. But for now, I feel like this is a good start.
Sounds good to me. All right, I'll tag that one approved as well. Um, cool.
Sorry.
And then I still, uh, stop and go, say again, Alex?
Stop and go voted on. Hmm.
Does anyone have an objection to stop and go?
No.
Nice. Good.
I do that anyway. Who the fuck waits at red lights?
Yep, hold on, let me, uh.
Every time I get pulled over, I just claim I have to rush back to the hospital and I have never once been given a ticket ever.
At least you don't say it was green in my eyes.
Okay, I don't do that. See, this is why red lights are dangerous.
Okay.
there were something, oh, the, the, oh, yeah, go on.
Sorry, uh, could we just, well, maybe this is by design, but the drip act? Can we get like a citation in the MDT for that? I believe it's been applied multiple times, but there's no actual, uh, like, charge in the MDT.
Are they just billing them but not charging them?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need it on anyone's record. It's just a.
If, if that was the intended purpose, I just had a multiple people ask for it, but if, if the clean thousand dollar billing is it, then that's cool.
Yeah, I don't feel like there's necessity to have it on the record just because you can dress up.
Okay, understood.
Oh, um, important note. Uh, just for the sake of posterity, who will be available for a Mr. K pardon hearing? Uh, next week sometime? We can set a date now. Just, I just need to know who will be available again.
Uh, the time would be more important than the actual day for me at least, but I could be available.
Yeah, I might be unavailable for a few days starting the sixth, but it's still a little up in the air. So I can update y'all in our, in our email chain. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, why don't you just propose a date and see what we can get?
Okay, so we got Philippa, we got Alan, we got, uh, Malcolm, I believe will be fine to sit in on that.
Yeah, I proposed that question to everybody as far as confliction because I wasn't involved.
If you weren't involved in the case.
All right, all right.
Um, how about this Tuesday? At?
Tuesday.
Uh, five Pacific, two hours after.
I need, I need an hour or two after that on Tuesday.
Okay, let's do.
I have an appointment at 4:40, so I'll need, I would say probably at least 6:30.
Let's do eight PM Pacific on Tuesday.
This Tuesday.
Of course, I should be free then. That's before. I should get busy.
Also, anyone can be there. So if you guys are, if you believe you are able to judge Mr. K free of conflict, be it because you were not involved in the original situation or whatever, or because, you know, just perspective wise, I encourage all of you to come. I think my wife is conflicted because she was.
I'm conflicted.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was his attorney, right?
Yeah, literally the definition of participating in the initial case. I can't do it.
So, uh, Ed, are you able, uh, were you interested in coming? Are you conflicted?
Uh, I I'll have to let you know.
Hmm, okay. All right, so we got me, Malcolm, Philippa, what about you, Molten? Can you do Tuesday at eight?
Uh, perhaps, but yeah, I'd have to check a few things. I would not wait up. I'll try to be there, but I don't wait up on me.
Okay.
Thing, yeah.
Okay. Oh, well, I think we're done, ladies and gentlemen.
Actual shortest meeting ever.
We're getting more efficient.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, there's, so just, just as an FYI, uh, now that the MDT is working for me, I will be putting in the stuff I talked about last week's meeting about the unsafe operation of a wide load, negligent operation of a commercial vehicle, the off-road stuff and the DMV legislation that we agreed on already. And, uh, yeah, gun licenses start rolling out Monday and we are upping the hunting license.
Do we still care about the specifics in terms of the licenses or is it just for everybody?
Civilian weapons licenses have always had pretty similar policy from the BOJ. Uh, you may not have a felony. Um, besides that, it is up to the discretion of the issuing judge or, you know, clerk. Typically questions we ask are things like basic self-defense scenarios, why the person wants the license, what their motivation is, et cetera. Um, for many people, it is one of the first things they try to get when they come into the city. Uh, so it is something we take an opportunity to, you know, create them an MDT profile, get a picture of them, a headshot goes along with getting the license. That way, you know, police have someone to identify if the gun goes missing.
Oh, I remembered something.
Hmm.
Um, so as, as we all know, courtesy of our, our doing our due diligence to make sure the people at a security firm are not felons when transporting large amounts of money. Um, I feel that it, in a, a concerned, uh, they call them tier three or security clearance three. Group six worker came to me and suggested maybe a, a discount on a firearms license for people who are clean and working that job. Uh, I suggested maybe a 20% discount on the actual license.
Thoughts? How do I know who's who?
Uh, they, so they have a badge that, uh, you know, you could, that has their name on it and you can double check with like an ID and then, you know, whatever you need to do to verify their identity.
Okay, I'll go through that with the quirks. I don't have an issue with that. Um, so yeah, so basically to, to continue with the answer to Michael's question, um, there may be times when I don't issue someone a license, but I ask them to come back in a week or so. Often that's if, you know, they're fresh off the plane into the city and, you know, they very clearly walked up and tried to get a gun license the first second they're here. Or for example, another common scenario that Siobhan may have dealt with in the past is someone will come in a little beleaguered and, you know, fresh around the ears. And then there'll be a gang member with them in a balaclava, uh, basically urging them to get a gun license and telling them what to say. So many times in that case, we will deny the license for obvious reasons. Uh, but yes, if, uh, you know, you are a civilian, you can understand and explain the stand your ground concept in your own words. And you, you know, can justify to the clerk and or judge that you were a reasonable person, uh, then we have no issue issuing the licenses.
Well, what's the cost gonna be, Crane?
$25,000.
Good, good.
Uh, it's gonna be a little petty here.
Hmm.
If Molten's getting paid for his job with the audit, I want to get paid too.
What do you mean?
Well, he's a council member, uh, but also he's an auditor and I'm a council member technically, and I went through and I interviewed all of those people.
Uh, they have the.
Take it up with the state.
Is, is that what the treasurer did when she approved the payment for Jenny Hall?
Uh, the state approved the expenditures.
Okay, I will. Sick. Yeah, I think we're done. I think we're done, everybody. Good work.
That was a quick one.
Meeting.
Oh, oh, ooh, ooh, I got another thing. Um, when guns are rolled out, are we lowering the ammo? Uh, price?
Uh, I, I don't control that.
I highly doubt it.
I would, I would doubt it. The ammunition folks have worked with me and been very gracious about it, but I, I don't, no clue.
Uh, what else we got here?
Fuck ass this dumbass question to Max.
How much is ammo right now?
Two.
$2,000 for, I think it's like 16.
No, 30 bullets.
Is it 30? Okay.
Yeah. 30 bullets for $2,000. Easier.
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, this is all, you know, and we've also, as I said, established a limitation. You can only buy one gun a week. Reason is, is that obviously if, as we discovered in our beta testing program, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, uh, you know, previously you could just go in and buy as many as you wanted, which creates a problem because then there's no incentive as a clean civilian to not just proliferate your firearms to everyone.
Um, what do you guys think about making a regulated exclusion of exotic debris a felony? Cause as it stands now, I actually.
Oh, God, the hospital.
Yeah, so I walked into a hospital and someone had reassembled a deer carcass on one of the beds.
Oh, my God, that's disgusting.
It was disgusting.
Um, it was terrifying, actually. Um, so what do we think about making it a felony? One, two, Dakota, have you guys ever actually charged anyone with that?
Uh, I think people have been charged with it. Uh, the issue again is that, you know, most of the time when we're finding those, it's after the fact where they're just thrown about and, uh, you know.
Is it, is it possible to extract DNA from those carcasses?
I brought it up initially and I was, uh, well, I think the chief justice made a pretty strong point against it, so.
Well, what was the point against it again?
Uh, it's gonna be really hard for me to, you know, pull DNA off of a giant deer carcass.
Okay.
It's a very good point.
But I mean, if you worked hard enough, you could do it, right?
Uh, I can talk to the, uh, the DNA experts back at the PD and, and see.
Okay. Uh, yeah, cause right now it seems almost impossible. We have a huge fucking trash issue in Los Santos. Have you guys seen?
Yeah.
Uh, the, off the northwestern coast, uh, there is a, a trash utopia. It's insane. Someone has been deliberately going out there and just dumping trash. There are like 300 trash bags off the coast just floating there.
Yeah, a lot of people just chuck things off the pier into the water from the beach side, et cetera. So that, that is very consistent, like around the coastline I've seen.
It's not, it's not even right off the coast, guys. You can't get there except without a boat. Someone is deliberately going to the spot and just dumping trash there.
Uh, I don't have anything concrete written down, but I was thinking, and I don't know the logistics behind all this, but maybe if there was like a, um, secondary sanitation spot either in Sandy or in Polito, and it would incentivize people to, you know, work there and not have to drive all the way up to the other side of the state to actually pick up some of that garbage.
You're gonna be driving up Ellis Freeway every 10 minutes for sanitation robbery in the north.
I, I don't disagree with that to a certain extent. Um, but you know, it also might give people more of a reason to patrol up there if people are being robbed and it might deter some of the robberies that are happening in the city.
True. Uh, we, we can bring things like that forward, but I'm just gonna go right ahead and classify that under the same thing as no businesses will be approved that require any kind of construction.
Agreed.
It's, it's a pipe dream at best.
Okay, I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, we, mayor's office kind of got fucked this term, huh?
Welcome, welcome to exactly what happened to Andy.
Yeah. Uh, we're, we're doing our best. We're doing good. We do a little, we do a little government, guys. We do a little government.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity and say, as someone who spent the better part of three years sitting around doing all this in his own head and not having anyone to talk to about it, I appreciate everybody's work because uh, government, uh, five or six years ago was fucking dog shit and it was boring as hell. And nothing really got done except for just messages on high from the state. So thank you all for making this somewhat palatable and interesting.
Oh.
Uh, Spencer asked, Spencer asked, do we get complimentary weapons licenses for audit?
No.
He could spend half of his audit money on one.
That would agree, agree, motherfucker, man.
Tell him he got a free one and 25 grand. There you go.
Whoa.
Jesus, Molten.
Oh, uh, one, one final point about the.
Civilian oversight for.
Jenny Hall suggested this with her, with her audit report or whatever about, uh, PD receiving a cut of the, uh, the billing or they're, they're going into their account or whatever. And then, you know, they get the 15% and then half of what would normally go to state would go to the PD budget or whatever. Um, yeah, yeah, no, one, two, uh, the reason for no is because the, the systems that are going to be put into place in a little bit will, will effectively allow them to have a budget from the state. It's just not in yet. That's all.
I really, uh, and this is one of the things that again, this is one of the things that's hard to talk about, uh, but I think people really need to get used to the idea that there are things the federal government needs to use the state funds for. Uh, that some of us may never be privy to and never will, and that's just how it is. We should all fucking accept it. It is not a fucking piggy bank. It is a money pit. Thank you.
Hmm.
Good work, everyone.